It's Thursday, July 20th, 2023, Ross Board of Education Work Session. Mrs. Logan, could you please call the roll?
This is Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Kleinfeldter.
President.
Mr. Schnell.
Here.
Mrs. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Van Wekel.
Here. Dr. Conkle, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Just want to review the work session agenda. It's in your packet. We have two presentations tonight. Business Operations Study, and then we'll get into our report card data from Mr. Richards. So, let me start with the Business Operations Study. We really tried to analyze every concept of our district. And one of them, one of the concepts here is our business operations. So how do we dig into our operations and try to save as much money as we can? So, we, if you remember the school board, back in the springtime, approved a contract for John Thomas. John is a retired business operations or business manager. And we ended up spending about $1,800 for Mr. Thomas, which I think when you see after this presentation, it was definitely worth the savings on everything that we think we can accomplish. So you can see the goals here for our Business Operations Department. Obviously, we wanted to provide a mentor for Mr. Huff, and I'm going to turn the microphone over to him in a minute. We wanted to create a financial or functional preventive maintenance plan, which I think we accomplished that. And also a comprehensive purchasing plan. And then more, just as important, to analyze the gas and electric utilities on all of our buildings. That was a very interesting end product. And then finally, how do we analyze all of our contracts and look at cost-saving measures? So, I think it's been a good three months looking at this. And at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Huff for his time that he spent with Mr. Thomas.
Thanks, Chad. Um, yeah, like Chad said, I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Thomas. A great wealth of knowledge from Edgewood. During that time, you know, you can see we went over, you know, what things could Ross do to be just more successful with our operations, you know? And I think we found a lot of things that, you know, we can do better, but we were also doing a lot of great things already, you know? So, and then we took a deep dive into the facilities section of the state audit. That seemed to be kind of a point for them when they did that audit, that it looked like we really, you know, lacking in. So like Chad said, we developed this working document for the five-year facilities plan. It's pretty, pretty extent, it, it, it's overwhelming when you see it. But honestly, when you start working through it, it really helps me, helps the district, you know, and helps board members and everybody to really see kind of what our plan is moving forward. You know, because things in there like chillers, boilers, you know, those are things that, you know, could cost, you know, half a million dollars. But, you know, if we don't start planning for those items now, you know, it, it would be a, you know, tough situation. So, you know, by making this a more functional, more, you know, something we review more often, you know, it's going to be great for us to, to catch up and, you know, be ahead of these things. With our purchasing plan, you know, board policy states, you know, any quotes over $10,000 require, you know, us to go through a bid procedure. And anything over 50, you know, we've got to go through the sealed, you know, bid process. And, you know, the state-approved cooperative purchasing. So, currently, we belong to the EPC for cooperative purchasing. We're going to look into the Ohio Schools Council and the Department of Administrative Services to just be more competitive with some of our bids we get. Make sure we're in line with when we're doing projects or when we're purchasing items. Just, you know, make sure we're, we're doing what's best for the, for the school. And, yeah, these, these, these groups have many contracts, I mean, food services, you know, custodial supplies, all types of things. So, yeah. Purchase services, we spend about $160,000 a year, pretty shocking when you really dig into it, on HVAC labor. We're gonna go down the path of investigating still, looking into possibly a technician, you know, for HVAC. School districts in, since about the 2000s have really taken on a lot more HVAC responsibilities that I've seen. I was in the industry for many years. You know, basically, in the past, all you did was heat a building, you know, and you open windows. Well, now you've got a lot more involved because we're cooling. I mean, you're sitting in here right now not sweating because of that, you know? We're using a lot more electric, you know? Items are just, you know, there's a lot more wear and tear, and those items are very expensive. So, by looking into, you know, hiring somebody that we can in-house use to help us, you know, better keep up on our equipment, you know? Not saying that our current contractor doesn't do that, but it would just be better to have that person in-house, you know? There's still items that maybe we couldn't handle, that we would, would still keep under a contract. But it would, you know, there's a potential savings of $70,000 a year just in hiring a person if we, you know, for labor. It would also decrease the cost of our contract by approximately $30,000. We'd have to really dig into that and see, but that's about approximate number, you know? So right there's, I mean, $100,000 in savings, you know, to really hire that person. And not to mention, they could also do other items, you know? Plumbing, electrical, all those repairs that we're calling out for real quick things that, you know, we get a service call on or something, you know? We could do that ourselves, and we, we try to now, but sometimes we just can't get to them.
Devin, do you want to talk about the, in our, in our preventive maintenance plan, our PI plan? We have money set aside for preventive maintenance. So this does not include the, is it 50 or 75,000 we have set aside? 75,000 a year that's already set aside for preventive maintenance?
Correct.
This does not include that, correct?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah. If we could get a better handle on it ourselves, savings, you know?
So this would be like break-fix things? This does not include changing filters, correct?
Correct. No.
So explain, explain to us, what, what, what is that 160 detail?
So that 160 detail, I mean, you're talking compressors, you know, belts, bearings, anything, anything functional that breaks refrigerant leak, which, you know, we have that often, you know, when certain things go down. I mean, they eat, it eats up a lot of money real fast, you know? Especially Elda and the middle school, you know? We, now that we've got that under control, we're doing great. But in the beginning, you know, those things ate up a lot. So, yeah, those break-fix items, that is what makes up that 160. The 70, you know, or the current contract, you know, by cutting it in half there, that's already something that needs to be done anyways. You know, you have to do that preventative maintenance. So.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah. Utilities. So a little background on our utilities. This one was very interesting. Me and John dove into this, and honestly, both of us learned a lot out of it. So, a little background here. Elda has Duke Gas, Duke Electric, okay? The middle school, admin, high school, and bus garage, everything kind of on this campus is Duke Gas but Butler Rural Electric. So it's kind of weird, you know, opposite side of the street, here we are, Butler Rural Electric. And then Morgan is Butler Rural Electric and propane. So, in 99, you'll see this, that Senate Bill 3 was passed, which went into effect in about 2001, that allowed energy customers the right to choose their own energy supplier. So that meant that if you were buying from a privatized energy company like Duke, you could go out and shop a rate. But what we did learn was that being part of Butler Rural and being part of a co-op, and like City Hamilton would be the same way, and any other kind of entities that kind of produce their own and, and manage their own power, you, you kind of are exempt from that program. You can't go out and shop it. But what we did find is that we actually get a very competitive rate being in a co-op, and we actually get a very large kickback on our return. If you can see right there, a majority of our energy uses is Butler Rural. And our return just from them after, you know, for one year was $42,000. So not only do we get a great rate, we get a great return as well. Now, what we spend, I'd have to dig into that further, but that's still great. But at Elda, we were able to shop our rate. So at Elda, we were paying around 10 cents a kilowatt hour. We got that down to about 6 cents for a third, a three-year contract. Now, we went with a three-year contract because if you'll see, well, I'll dig into the gas in a second. But we went into a three-year contract because it seems like energy trends, the way they swing and move, you kind of don't want to get into a long-term one because, A, we could, you know, we could see it go way down, and then we'd be missing an opportunity. But right now, I think that's a great rate to get, and, you know, we, we locked that in. And I mean, it looks like if we, if we use the same amount of energy we used last year, we'd save about $41,000 in Elda alone. So that's huge. For gas, we were, you know, obviously able to shop it out for every building but Morgan. And the market rate on the average for gas the last two years has been much higher than it has been in the past 10. And you can see there in that, that document I gave you. If you look at that, that is a dollar, you know, that, that represents CF, or CCF represents 100 cubic feet. C represents 100, so it's 100 cubic feet. So, if you can see there, the past two years has just, it flew up. The price just escalated. And you can see at the top is, is the winter rates. And that's the majority of the time that we're, we're using gas. We're burning gas, most of our gas in winter time. Summertime, kitchens, you know, about the only thing that uses gas, some hot water heat. So, that rate, our average rate, what year was that? 74 cents last year, and then it was 94 cents the year before. And the winter average was about 94 cents. So you can see that's pretty high compared to what we locked in at 52 cents for, for 36 months. So we should see a tremendous savings of $27,000, as long as, like I said, we're on the same trend as we were last year. Now, we did contract with separate brokers through this process, just because it seems like one, one's kind of companies specialize in electric, others specialize in gas. That's just the way it is. But overall, it looks like we'll save around $68,000 just in energy, you know, costs. And obviously, there's other things we can do on top of that, you know? Better energy management with our HVAC systems. You know, we're, we're going to go through a lot more extensive scheduling processes and make sure that we're doing the right things to optimize that. So. We also dove into some contracts, and we developed a document to help us kind of keep a better tab on those contracts. John had a great, you know, idea, and kind of the way he formulates and does things from, from his past experience, you know? Always, you know, look back at them, even if they're not due that year. Always kind of go back, review, and just double-check things. Maybe there's something we're not seeing, maybe there's something that they're not doing right, you know? And obviously, we always read our contracts, but it's always good to stay fresh on them. There's also a separate document we built within that that has inspections, you know? Sprinkler inspections, you know, hood health inspections. Buses, you know, buses, I got to get them checked twice a year. My mechanics are great about that, but it's nice having a document just in case that hit by a bus clause, you know? If nobody's around, at least we know where to pick up the pieces. So. And we've got another one where we can look in the areas where we've got multiple vendors, you know? We just want to make sure that if we do have multiple vendors in a certain area, why? You know, is there a reason for this? In some situations, there are. Others, you know, we're working on cleaning up. So, our estimated savings, when we kind of dove into these, was Copier Contracts was, was one that was very interesting. I learned a lot. Thanks, you know, Steve, Rob, and, you know, we all learned a lot from that. And, and that was very interesting to just kind of learn how that works. It's a very different kind of business. But, you know, we locked in a great contract, I think, and we're going to save about $15,000 per year, you know? On top of that, with, like I said, with our HVAC, you know, if we hire our own in-house person, another $30,000. And then energy contracts of, you know, up to 68, if not more. And then another one I didn't really touch on in there was kind of custodial supplies and facility services, you know, like your Centas and things like that. You know, there's potential savings in there we're going to keep investigating on. With that all, I mean, it looks like we could potentially save up to $200,000 with that, you know? Technician and all these savings. So. Do you have a question?
No, no.
All right, that's about it. So, it was a great experience digging into it. I think I learned a lot. I think, you know, we all learned a lot from it. And there's definitely some things we can do better, but we're, we were also doing a lot of great things already. So, yeah, I got my work cut out for me, and that document's, that document's going to keep me on task for sure.
I'm sure. So Kevin, this was all, or Devin, this was all derived basically through the audit?
A lot of these items.
A lot of it. I mean.
And, and with that being said, even with the audit items, we dove into some other things.
Correct. Yeah.
You know, because of it.
When you, have we ever, I think I know the answer to this. John has a reputation in the county as being one of the best business managers around. He's a negotiator. He's a talker, as you probably know.
Yeah.
He's a, he loves to talk.
Yeah.
But he's really, really good at what he does. And prior to him coming here, I don't think in the history of Ross, we've ever negotiated gas. We've ever negotiated any of the electrical things. And, I mean, that's a huge savings.
Yeah.
Huge savings.
Yeah. We, you know, we both kind of, that's one of the things we both kind of learned was, didn't even know that option existed, you know? We wasn't really privy to that market. And funny enough, I'm part of a big list, you know, listserv for business managers, and it got brought up a couple of weeks after we did this.
Right.
So it was very interesting to see that a lot of people kind of don't understand this, but, I mean, the opportunity's out there. Unfortunately, we don't get maybe the benefit that maybe other districts that are completely on a Duke or a, you know, a privatized electric, you know, company could get. But, like I said, we're doing great.
Yeah. Just full circle with your position over the last three to four years has been a little bit of everything. And business managers wasn't one of them, you know? But I'm glad that you had an open mind going into this. I knew, I knew personally it was going to be a lot. And I knew he was going to throw a lot at you, and he's got a lot of, I think the detail that he has with the spreadsheets and all those things that Chad was telling me about, I think will really, really help you just to stay organized, like you said.
Right.
You got to spend money to make money, unfortunately. And, you know, if an HVAC person is that cost, and it could save you that cost.
Right. And don't get me wrong, our current contractors, great. They do great work. But, um, you know, I'm always looking to save money.
Yeah.
I mean, Chad knows I'll go get a chair for free if I need to.
To spend money to make money. It's hard, I mean, it, it's hard to, in an environment where you're, you know, a school system where you're, you're cutting staff and so on and so forth.
Right.
Sometimes you got to do this the right way, too. But it is impressive. I mean, to spend 1,700 bucks, Chad, for, for John, and you guys came up with 200 and something thousand dollars, that's.
That 15, that 15 on the top, that was, I mean, that mainly was John. John did a great job at that.
He's negotiated all that stuff.
I mean, he, he knew the copier business inside and out.
Right.
So.
Well, and I said this before, I think every school district should go through some type of study like this. So next steps for us, we want to present to you guys in the fall time, a job description and a salary schedule for an HVAC technician. So, we're in the process of developing that. But over the course of three, five years, you know, $166,000 a year, that adds up. So, we think we can find the person to meet our needs and maybe do some other stuff, too, some maintenance items. So, that'll, that'll be across your desk in the, in the near future.
Good. Keith, you got anything on?
What's our return on investment percentage? 1,800 to, what is that?
Where? 200,000, 1,800, that's a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
About a, is that 1,000%? 1,100 and something?
Heather?
Uh, I guess I was going to ask, would we reach out to him again, like in our, like, two-year process?
Possibly, yeah. It's a good idea.
Savings or?
Heather, I think a lot of people do it. Like Fairfield has already contacted him and some other.
It's just good practice.
Yeah.
Just to see, like, what we did, you know, maybe it changes if market changes.
Yeah. It's like that state audit, like, as much as hassle as it was, but doing that about every five or six years for schools, it's, it's really good reflection. Mr. Schnell?
I mean, maybe you kind of already answered the question, but I know you used to be in that, that realm. You think, what's that job market look like? Is, is that?
Honestly, I have.
Is it going to be really hard to find somebody qualified?
I probably, I probably know what, some areas to reach out to. It, it might be tough, but me and Chad have talked about it a lot. Finding the right person, too, is, is going to be key. You know, because we, we really want it to be kind of a, a broad-range job, too, to really help us in all areas. But we really want to focus on HVAC.
On the jobs that we've had done, did it just take one person to do, or like if, did it take two?
You're talking about HVAC?
Yeah.
Majority of the work is a singular person around here. Yep. There are, obviously, there are jobs that are heavy that require two, two hands, obviously, but we have that. We have the ability.
That was.
Yeah.
Then one other question, the, your five-year operations plan. We've, we've got the 10-year facilities permanent improvement plan. Are they, do they, are they in sync? Do they talk? Is that, is that the goal?
It's all still a work in progress with the five-year plan and the 10, but what that's been working on is getting it all in sync. Yeah. I got the five-year pretty cleaned up. There's still, there's still a lot to do in it.
And in that plan, it has when contracts end, when, all that stuff.
Yes. Yes. And, and when to kind of check up on them, too.
Right.
We kind of set some stuff in there to kind of remind us. So.
Mrs. Webb?
No questions.
Okay. We'll move on.
On the state audit, our energy costs were like about 34% higher than our peer group. How close does this get us now to being within that average? I'd like to see that comparison.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't actually do that comparison yet, because we, like I said, we really got to see the numbers and see where we go. Because we're not, not only are we going to save money on the actual dollar amount of the, of the energy price, but we're also working towards better scheduling, better, better.
We can dig into that.
Yeah.
And the three-year, the three-year contract, I mean, that's smart, because like you said, you don't know, I mean.
Well, like I said, you can look on that document right there and just watch the numbers.
Yeah.
It's crazy. Went below 50 cents, I mean, all the way up to a dollar something.
Yeah.
Doubles. So.
Do our peers have the same weird makeup as us, though? Of half propane and.
No, I don't know about that.
It's not apples to apples.
It was just.
Probably not. That's a good point.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huff.
Mr. Richards.
Dr. Conkle?
Yes, sir. I'll switch out the laptop.
You said switch up?
Devon, Morgan heats with propane?
Yeah. There's just no gas out there, so you have.
I know. I mean, I lived right down the hill.
And geothermal. No, I'm sorry, I take that back. They're not heated over. They have geothermal and wells. They're, they're heating, there is water, it cooks.
All right. So it's not a tremendous. I thought, I thought when Bill Spade put a geothermal in there back in the day. All right.
Yeah.
All right.
They just use it for order cooking. They got geothermal.
And Morgan?
Yeah. All right. Good, good evening to everybody. Hope the summer is going well, as much as we've got left. Mrs. Brozark, under three weeks? Is that the official? Yeah, under three weeks. So hopefully, hopefully, what's that?
I'd love to see those back-to-school sales signs.
So I hope everybody enjoys these last, last couple of weeks. I'm excited to report a little bit on the Ohio State test results from this past year. So I'll give you a comprehensive overview. There is certainly a lot more detail we can dig into that we won't get into tonight. I've been reminded that I'm on a, I'm on a clock by Mr. President there. So, we'll give a, a broad overview. Obviously, there will be time for questions. I don't think you have these links in your packet. I linked some, some background documents that we've been working from. Obviously, you can't click on them in your, your packet anyways, but I will share this with Dr. Conkle, and he'll, he'll then share it with you, I'm sure. So, goals for tonight, to share some basic report card information in our four ELA math, science, and social studies content areas for each building, to share the timeline for receiving additional information as we, as we hit the fall here. And then also to share some of the insights from our building administration. So I, I had the, the pleasure of meeting with our building administrators over the last couple of weeks to kind of dig into some of this, some of this information and get some of their perspective as the building educational leader and what they saw in the results. I certainly didn't want it to be me sitting in my office digging through data and then, and then drawing my own conclusions. So I was able to meet with those administrators, and they, they had a wealth of information, both about this test and then about some of the historical trends that we've seen in Ross local schools. So, we'll go ahead and get started here. First up, we've got our English Language Arts. You'll see that in the third column from the, the right there, I've, I've color-coded them. This is not a strict color coding. Some of it is a little, I'll, I'll explain it. So, green obviously means we've improved in those areas, and that's, that's state, or that's proficiency. So that, that percentage represents proficiency on this spring 2023 test in English Language Arts. So you'll see some highlights there. Third grade, fifth grade, and seventh grade all improved. I'm going to highlight third grade, improved by a great deal. They improved by seven percentage points over last year's administration. And then fifth grade as well improved 8% in terms of proficiency. Then at the bottom, bottom of the screen, you'll see some of the different metrics I looked at in this initial look at this data. And I'll also point out, kind of disclaimer about all of this, this is the initial data. So the state has not yet gone through and, and worked, worked out, you know, alternative assessment, any kind of waivers. So anybody who, any students who got waivers for opting out of this test, not opting out, but because of medical conditions or whatever, couldn't take the test, they haven't gone through and really quote-unquote scrubbed that data. So this is the initial look. This is like getting the report card in the, in the mailbox, and, and you see the A, B, whatever. They'll go through all of that. They'll add all the different measures they've added over the last couple of years in terms of the growth factor, some of the other different, different things that they've added. And then we'll get all of that come later this fall, sometime, hopefully mid-October. So, up next, we've got our math scores. Thrilled with some of these math scores. Some of them are obvious areas of improvement, areas of growth that we're going to really focus on here in the near future. So once again, third grade knocked it out of the park. They, they improved eight percentage points in proficiency. And then fifth grade again improved seven percentage points. We see the, the lone red mark on that screen, and that is Algebra I with 43% as compared to a 75% during last year's administration. And I'll say this right now, we, we knew this was coming, okay? So we, we did away with a year-long Algebra I course and a year-long geometry course. And so we, we, we've got two-thirds of our high school students who were enrolled previously, approximately two-thirds, who were enrolled in that year-long Algebra I course. So essentially, with this last year, we cut that instructional time in half. And anytime you do that, we know that it's, it's going to impact kids. And so we've got that, that 43% in Algebra I. Thrilled to report that the geometry scores remained relatively evening, even. They went down a little bit, but not, not substantial, not, not substantially. And that's a testament to the great teachers we have working in those classrooms with our, with our students.
Jake, can I ask you?
Yes. Yeah.
Yep. With the algebra and geometry cutting in half.
Yes.
Is that typical with other districts in the area? Or does Monroe have year-long algebra and geometry?
I'm not entirely, well, they, they're not on, on our schedule, so they, they typically have year-long. It's the same amount of time. So a year-long at Monroe would be a semester here. Does that make sense?
So we're just craving it.
So, yeah, so we, we had the luxury, and it was great for kids to have that, that double time essentially for that course, for two-thirds of our students.
Geometry only dropped 3%, Algebra I dropped 32%.
I'm, I'm well aware. Yes.
But what we don't know is what their eighth-grade scores were before they came over. Like, it could be, they could have been 25% lower than a normal group. Amy probably knows.
But also, I mean, you have to remember that some of our students did take that Algebra I test in the fall, and those were pretty comparable to what we had done in the past. More, I mean, they dropped, but not as significant. And then these scores have all of our special ed students in them. We also had about three weeks shorter period of time in that because of the testing window. So compared to first semester to second semester, we had about four months to teach all of Algebra I. And I will also address the, the Monroe question. I think that there are many schools in our area that will double-block our low-level students. And so they, they might, on average, be taking them year-long, but.
Yeah. Yeah. That's kind of what I was.
Certain students are identified to receive double-block instruction.
That's kind of what I was getting at.
Yes.
So now that you know the game, now that you know how it's, not you personally, but the high school staff, is, is the tech, I mean, the technique is, I mean, I don't, it's like in basketball when you, you're dealt, you're dealt what you're dealt, and you're still trying to do the best. still trying to do the best you can do. It's, and it's tough. So I'm sure that there's challenges you guys have thought, thought through a lot of that stuff as well.
I've spent a lot of my summer working on it.
Do you see some light at the end of the tunnel, or is this just a road that's gonna be tough to hope?
I don't see ourselves digging us out of that.
Okay.
That greatly, no, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you, Amy.
Sorry, put you on the spot.
No, that's fine, that's fine, Karen.
And, and Mrs. Brozart mentioned the fall scores, they are not represented in this, in this presentation in isolation. They are obviously included in the percentages from last year or previous years, but those are linked in the last slide of this that you'll have access to, and I've broken it out by fall versus spring administration. The high school has also done, they've added in a plus course for our, our content areas that helps to kind of, kind of mitigate that a little bit, but it's not the, it's not the.
The plus courses are specifically for students that.
We're not gonna get these results until like.
Yeah, so those, so Mrs. Scholker's remind, the plus courses are specifically for students on an IEP.
Gotcha.
And so that was, that was one way that, that our high school staff, Mr. Martin, tried to help, to help lessen this blow, but there's nothing that can replace, you know, double, double-time instruction.
Time is time, yep.
Right. So then, I've got this broken down by, by building, so we'll start with Elda Elementary. Just, if, if you're into sports analogy, they, they knocked it out of the, out of the park.
Yeah.
Just knocked it out of the park, and that's a testament to Mr. Hall and his staff. A lot of the, the work they do with student data is phenomenal, so they, they, they look at student data often, and then, you know, obviously address any, any student skills that need to be, need to be strengthened throughout that process. So you've got spring of 2023, eighty-seven percent proficient, that's up fifteen percentage points from the spring of 2022, just a huge gain. And then you've got in your, the ELA, they made an eight, eight percent increase, and that, that's, that is very literally a result of the focus that they've had on those two areas, the time they've, they've spent studying the student data and then addressing any areas of deficiency in the classroom. Mr. Hall's reflections, you know, I sat down with him for forty-five minutes, we looked through this data, he talked about what he sees from his perspective as, as a building administrator. He is, is very proud of the math proficiency, and then the percentage in advanced and accomplished. Okay, that's the highest in five years, and I'm gonna go back here real quick to, to this screen, okay? So in each of these, on each of these screens down at the bottom, the second item there is the percentage of, the combined percentage of students who scored at the advanced or accomplished levels. So you've got limited, basic, proficient, advanced, and accomplished. And so the third grade overall scored seventy-one percent of their students scored advanced and accomplished in ELA. And then in math, seventy-eight percent of their students scored advanced and accomplished. And then you can see the, the numbers on down. And we had almost, I'd, I'd say, probably, maybe all save a couple of our grade levels in, in each of these content areas, had, had increases in the number of, of students in advanced and accomplished, all of which you can see in that, that spreadsheet that you'll, you'll have linked. So that's, that's, that's great news. Area for growth for Elda is ELA proficiency. They were very close, they were at seventy-eight percent, and Mr. Hall says that he, he wants to hit that eighty percent next year, and I have full faith that he's gonna do it. At Morgan, they had improvement, they, they started out a little bit higher, but from spring of 2022 to spring of 2023, they went up two points in math to eighty-eight percent, so that's eighty-eight percent of proficiency. And then spring 2022 to spring 2023 in ELA, they went up seven points, so from eighty to eighty-seven percent. And what, man, that was quick.
I forgot I turned it on.
That was quick.
Sorry, Jake.
All right, do I drop the mic now?
I forgot.
And so, seven, seven-point increase in reading, and once again, that's a testament to Mr. Perry and his staff and the focus that they have on improving in these fundamentally important skills. Mr. Perry's reflections, his biggest success was, he's, he's already crunched all the numbers, this, these, this is the background work that the state is gonna do. Mr. Perry does that on his own, as do many of our administrators, but he, he, he does it, and if you know Mr. Perry, you know that, that I'm not, I'm not exaggerating on that. So he jumped in and calculated the performance index, which is what we'll see on the state report card come October, performance index of one-hundred-and-six-point-six, and he highlighted that we are, we are moving kids well beyond basic in all areas. Area for growth, he wants to focus on that limited, basic, proficient group, those quintiles in math, and focus on those intervention strategies for those, for those students with our new math program, or are now gonna be two-year-old math program envisioned. With Ross Intermediate School, we have a lot of great jumps in fifth grade specifically in math, we, we jumped up four, six percentage points, and then in fifth grade in ELA, we went up the eight points that I referred to earlier. The, Mr. Rettenger's focus, or his reflection, he wants to focus, as, as some of our other administrators do, on intervention with struggling learners. So he's identified a pocket of kids that are, are struggling with, with reading especially, and his teachers, kudos to them, some of his, his staff members have, have really worked hard, they, they secured a grant to, to get an intervention program for readers at our fourth grade level. So they, they know this is, this is happening, I'm sorry, our fifth grade level, they know this is happening, and they, they have, have done the extra work to address, address the gap. And then Mr. Rettenger wants to focus on staff use of student data, and so that's, that's using, you know, teacher-based teams, which is, is what our elementary schools have been doing. Mr. Hall's a, a great leader in that, that department, and so he's gonna share with the other building admin how he goes about that to get staff buy-in, to really focus on student data and how to use that to improve instruction in the classroom. And then his area of growth is, is those struggling readers. Then we've got Ross Middle School, we had a jump in seventh grade math, we had a, a big jump in seventh grade ELA by eight points, and then a lot of the rest of the areas, we maintained, there's a little bit of a dip in sixth grade English. Mr. Saylor, Mr. Albrink shared that their biggest success was maintaining ELA scores even with shifts in staffing. And so in that conversation, they described some of the domino effect of taking, let's say, a teacher from eighth grade, moving them down to sixth grade to teach, to teach a subject they may be certified in, but they haven't taught for a while, just to get another, another shift in place. And so there, there's a lot of domino effect that happens when you, you take teachers out of one area, move them to another area, and you can imagine, you then have to replace that initial area. And so Mr. Saylor, Mr. Albrink talked about that a little bit, and they're, they're, they were happy that they were able to relatively maintain those ELA scores. Area for growth is also in ELA, and this actually, this actually connects to one of our larger areas of growth as a district that we're excited about this coming year, and that's in, in making sure that our curriculum and any of the assessments we use are aligned top to bottom, K through twelve, and then left to right, you know, it doesn't matter if you're in a classroom, this seventh grade classroom versus this one, you're getting the same, the same material, the same assessments, and that'll allow us to use formative data in a, in a much better way. And then finally, we've got the high school. A lot of, a lot of good scores here, so we maintain a lot despite some of the cuts that we've experienced, and Mr. Martin, Mrs. Morgan, they shared that their biggest success this year was maintaining the geometry scores even without that year-long course that we discussed. An area for growth is continuing to improve the structure of course offerings so that we can maintain our tradition of excellence at Ross High School despite the reduced resources. And so I know we're in conversations as a district all the time about how we can improve, what resource, how we can better manage our resources, like, like Mr. Huff discussed, better manage our resources in terms of our human capital to make sure that we, we are giving our kids what they need at all times so that we can continue to, to, to improve moving forward. So timeline, I meant, I referred to this throughout, on our, our first couple of PD days, I know staff is thrilled that we're gonna look at data, we're gonna do that quote-unquote deep dive that everybody loves into the data, they're gonna get in there and look at their own specific data, and then in preparation for mid-October, when we'll get, we'll get our state report card, and then value-added reports to start to, to look at, at growth over the, over the last year. Then in mid-November, our staff will dig into those value-added reports, and then finally, in January third, that, that Professional Learning Day, we'll go back and, and do a little bit more digging into the data as we look toward the following year. So, in these two links, you'll see the first one is a spreadsheet, and that has a three-year comparison of scores, it also has quintiles, so the basic, limited, proficient, accomplished, and advanced, it has quintile scores, so you can see how we've trended over the last three years in every subject area, and then there is a narrative overview, so kind of talking through some of those trends. And, there you have it. Questions?
Go ahead. Keith, you got questions?
Jake, on the high school slide, the state average for biology was twenty-three percent.
It's, it's woeful, and it's, it's, that's historically.
So is that a, there was some chart on there that no one had ever seen before?
I couldn't tell you, I can't tell you at that level of detail, but it's.
Genetic biome process that no one had ever.
It's, I'm, I'm not sure, but it, it is historically that bad.
That just says that's not a valid test. If I gave that as a teacher to my regular class, and only, that was the average.
Right.
I'd be analyzing, either I did something wrong, or I forgot something, or.
Yeah.
Whatever, so that's.
But it also, that also illustrates, I mean, if we look at our spring 2023, which is red up there, you know, dipped from that eighty-one percent last year, but it's still forty-three percent above the state average.
Yes.
We must be doing something right, and so we.
I understand that, but.
I know, I know.
Mrs. Hayes, do you have anything?
I, I guess I haven't had time to process the forty-three and the sixty-seven in American history, just to go back to see what our reflective, like, to look at our cuts.
Right.
Like, and what is the process to, with the cuts we have, how, how are we, like, what, I mean, they said the areas for growth is to improve on the course offerings, but I just curious what the plan is.
And, and that's the conversation we're in right now, we've been in for quite some time, expecting some of these numbers to happen, and so now that we've got them in front of us, our goal as a district, building by building, is to look at the resources we have currently, look at areas that we can, we can maybe add resources, maybe, maybe shift resources, and so that's, that's the answer we're looking for as well, Mrs. Hayes, it's, yeah, it's sobering. It is, especially, you know, our district, we're, we're used to, to green across the board, and so it's, it's been sobering, and I know our teachers take it to heart. You know, we try to, we try to remind teachers, this is one data point, this is one data point, this is the Ohio State test, there are a ton of other data points, and, and it's our goal as a group to collaborate and to, to make sure that we can, once again, continue to offer our kids what they need.
Mr. Chanel?
Nothing for me, good, good info, good presentation.
Thank you. Jake, thanks for the presentation. Dr. Conkle, so with, I, I really liked the reflections from the principals, and, well, administrators, the principal and assistant principal of each building. Are these, when they give you their, their goals for the year, I'm sure this is all.
This will be tied into those, yes.
Tied into, yeah.
Into their goals, yes, and mine, too.
Yeah, and I, I wanna second what you said about, you know, the staff not getting down, I mean, I know Mrs. Brozart's here, but there's a, there's a lot of math teachers, and I'm, I'm, I'm not a teacher, I'm a coach, but sometimes you're, you're dealt the, the talent you have, and no matter if you change how, how you play defense, offense, and everything else, at the end of the day, it's talent. And so what I'm hearing from Mrs. Brozart is, there's time, and if you take that time away, no matter what you do, time is time, just like talent is talent. So I know it's a tough, I've had some teams where we had low talent, so I feel your pain as far as, you know, the time being crunched, and hopefully, in the future, there might be some ways to do some stuff to get that back where it needs to be. It's not a reflection of the staff.
No, absolutely not.
I guess that's what I'm trying to get at.
Absolutely not, and once again, these data points are, are just from this one test about Ross local schools.
Yeah.
We don't have the comps, we don't have any of the comparative data to other local school districts.
Right.
And so that might, that might shine a light on maybe, as Mr. Klaunfelter said, maybe this, this year's biology test was, was something else, maybe this year's algebra test, we don't, we don't know any of that yet, we don't, we certainly don't know the growth yet, and so, you know, this is achievement, these are achievement scores. Once we get the value-added back and get that state report card, we'll get a lot more insight as to, as to how our kids grew, and how they, how they navigated the impact of, of COVID, how they navigated, you know, some of the areas we've struggled in, how they, how they compared to peers, how they grew, each individual student grew over the course of year.
And that's what's been impressive about each building, is there, there's improvement all over us.
Absolutely.
And the elephant in the room is, we've had a shitty year.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's been a bad year, and the morale's been bad, and everybody was working and treading through, so I, I think personally, from my perspective, these numbers are really good.
Yeah.
They're really good, something to be proud of, especially the cards that were dealt, so.
Agreed.
Mrs. Webb?
I guess a, a couple of things, one, like, with the high school data that's up there, right, I mean, we, we know that, that math was impacted significantly with the change, but there wasn't, I mean, there wasn't a change with biology offerings, right?
No.
Or, okay, or American history, I guess, that's.
No.
Because, yeah, because those numbers, like you said, are sobering.
Right, right.
But then, and then just a, a comment, I, you know, when you like look at these numbers, keep in mind, you mentioned value-added several times, like, the numbers went down, like, for, you know, fourth grade to fifth grade, but it's, it's a different group of kids, right? So the ones that took it in fifth grade, when you're comparing the scores from spring of twenty-two, are the, you know.
Not the same.
A different group of kids, I just wanted, just, just to say that publicly, so it's.
Absolutely, and then, and on that spreadsheet, I put together with the comps, you can, you know, draw a diagonal line down.
Yeah, that's what I was doing, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're like, well, they, you know, they're, so are they in line with how they performed the year before, kind of thing?
Yeah, if I had included that, we would have been at thirty-seven minutes, and.
Gotcha, gotcha.
President would have been upset.